Green Development Director, we will certainly ensure that all projects meet the building code. All of the rooms in these types of buildings are going to be sprinkled per the fire code, the building code regardless, and so the garbage room would be sprinkled. And all multifamily buildings are sprinkled at a higher level of safety than your typical single-family home. So there should not be an issue, but we can certainly ensure that that our applicants are meeting the building code. We see these types of installations in cities throughout the state. So not too concerned that we have a safety issue here.
All right. Thank you for the answer.
I do also want to note that we updated the language to include a reference to our existing municipal code, Chapter 15, which discusses fire code and sprinkle systems.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The question I've got is this idea of the green waste and kitchen waste in the chute system. So if somebody is disposing of kitchen waste down a chute system, first thing I thought about, the odors. You're going to have, how do you ensure that that chute is cleaned or cleared? If somebody dumps kitchen waste down it, I would be thinking that you'd have stuff rotting in the chute system.
That is a good question. The material is already going down the chutes in the two existing multifamily, multi-story projects we have with chute systems currently. And that will fall upon the property manager to maintain the chute systems as they were approved.
And we did work that language into the code amendment that they are required to keep it in a clean condition.
The first thing I thought of was what if somebody just dumped spaghetti down the chute? I mean, you can just imagine how it's going to cling to the sides. But that's for people that are more technical than I am in that regard. Okay, any other questions? All right, moving on to, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Do we have any public comments? I see no hands raised.
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, very good then. In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Any further questions or comments by the council? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move staff recommendation.
Councilmember Carling makes the motion. Is seconded by Vice Mayor Warner?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe?
Aye.
Councilmember Comer is absent from the record. Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Aye.
Mayor Marchand?
Aye.
5.04, hearing to consider amending the municipal code and development to establish short-term rental regulations, including permit and noticing requirements and noise standards. 5.04.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, Mark Roberts, the city manager, and Andy Roth, senior planner, will be leading us through this item tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Can everyone see my screen all right?
Yes.
Great. So in January, council directed staff to prepare an ordinance which would establish regulations for short-term rentals in Livermore. So just as a reminder, a short-term rental is a residential stay of 30 days or less. Online platforms, including Airbnb and Verbo, have increased the availability and prominence of short-term rentals. And short-term rentals provide benefits to the community. They expand the opportunity for visitors. They provide accommodations for those with children or pets, larger families, or those who just desire a different travel experience than one is offered through a hotel. It contributes to visitor spending and supports the local economy. And in addition, these types of vacation stays provide rental income for the host, which can be a benefit in areas such as Livermore with a high cost of living and property tax. Livermore has approximately 140 short-term rental units, which represent less than 1% of our total housing supply. And these are evenly distributed across the city, ranging from single rooms, studios, multifamily dwellings, and whole single-family houses. Most of the time, short-term rentals go unnoticed. And behavior of the use of the rental is regulated by the host. And this is done through a screening process inherent to these online booking sites. When disruptions do occur, however, they typically are related to increased noise associated with gatherings and things of that nature. So currently, the city does not have short-term rental regulations. And staff's recommending an ordinance which would establish procedures for regulating short-term rentals. This includes permit requirements. So each short-term rental would be required to obtain a permit prior to operating. And permits would be required to be renewed annually. As a part of that permitting process, the applicant would be required to provide local contact information for the host, but also for a second point of contact notice to responsible party. And this responsible party would be the point of contact in the event that the host is not on site or nearby. The city would provide notice within 100 feet of the proposed short-term rental to inform the neighbors of the intent of this individual to rent the property on a short-term basis. And as part of that noticing, the city would provide the name and the phone number for the host and the responsible party. The rules would also require that this contact information be provided onsite to the renters in case of an issue that could arise. The renters, the regulations would limit the number of short-term rentals permits that one could obtain to two, and permits would be limited to one per property. Under the ordinance, a short-term, I'm sorry, under the ordinance, a violation of the rules would result in a warning. And further violations would result in suspension of the permit for one year. And ultimately, if problems continue to persist, revocation of the permit. The city's noise ordinance is proposed to be amended. That would say limit outdoor noise standards for short-term rentals. This would be an exception to the noise ordinance. And it would say no excessive noise is permitted from 10:00 PM to 8:00 PM during the use of a short-term rental. And finally, short-term rentals would be required to pay transit occupancy tax for each transaction, similar to hotels or other lodging uses in the city. This tax goes to the general fund, but could be used to offset the cost of enforcement. Additionally, registration fees would be used to cover administrative costs. So upon staff's review and preparation of this ordinance, we discovered an overlap between our proposed short-term rental regulations and our current regulations and definitions for bed and breakfasts. Currently, a bed and breakfast is defined as an inn of six or fewer units for the rental accommodation of guests on an overnight basis. And these are allowed in houses within residential zones subject to a conditional use permit or a zoning use permit, depending on the district. And that created an overlap. And so staff is proposing to modify the definition of bed and breakfast to distinguish them from short-term rentals. So the new definition for bed and breakfast would be two to six units for overnight accommodation, and a short-term rental is limited to one unit, either the entire house or a portion thereof. And so with that, planning commission and staff recommend that the city council find that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, introduce an ordinance which would approve the municipal code amendments and development code amendments establishing short-term rental regulations, and instruct staff to file a notice of exemption with the Alameda County clerk if the project is approved. Following adoption of the ordinance, enforcement would commence on April 1st, 2021. This period would allow additional time for staff to prepare materials necessary to administer and process permits. And staff would also return to you with a fee update to establish a permit fee during that time prior to enforcement. And that concludes staff's presentation. We are available for any questions you may have or additional direction. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Let me just take a quick look down here. I see no questions at this point for staff. Actually, I've got a bunch of questions, but I think I'm going to save them until after the hearing, because I may have some more after that. Okay, no questions? In that case, I'm going to open up the public hearing?
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Really? I guess that's the, what happens with COVID is this was some high interest last time. Okay, with that, I'm going to, nothing on Zoom or Q and A YouTube? All right. Okay, very good. In that case, I'm going to close the public hearing. Question that I've got. The, so do we have any idea how many units where there's a host that has more than one home that he puts up for short-term rentals? There's been a lot of discussion at the US Conference of Mayors about this. And one of the justifications that Airbnb always puts out is that this enables individuals to be able to keep their home. The idea is you've got a retiree, the property taxes are onerous. So this gives them the opportunity to stay in their home because they can get some revenue from using Airbnb to rent out part of their home. I'm concerned that if you've got, somebody that's got several of these, then it's not really a case where they're using this to keep their home. You've got one, their own home, and they've got another one as a rental property. And that rental property then can't be used for a resident. It's just kept as a short-term rental. So my inclination would be to limit it to one permit per host. That's just, that's my thought. Do we have any idea how many people have more than one?
At this point in time, we don't know that number.
Okay. And it talks about if there is a violation of the noise or whatever, that it allows the suspension of that permit. Is that administrative or is it for the council?
It would be administrative at the discretion of the community development director.
And then who would enforce that?
So we would have, staff's contemplating having a consultant onboard that would monitor and track these. So if a permit were to be revoked or suspended and the unit continues to operate, then we'd know that there would be a violation or someone's operating without a permit. And then further action would be required. Sorry.
And then would we approach Airbnb or Verbo and have them shut it down? Or do we take some sort of administrative effort through neighborhood preservation?
I think we would, through our code enforcement, neighborhood preservation, contact the host directly.
Okay, do we currently receive any short-term rental transit occupancy tax?
We do not.
Yeah, would that be made through the permitting process? And then if they rented, they would have to then notify us that they're renting and therefore give us a heads up that they're making money, so they have to pay us?
Yeah, so through the regulations, they would require to pay it per transaction. I think that happens annually. And one of the tasks of the monitoring consultant would be to also track those transactions. So we would know what balance would be owed at the end of the year.
Seems like an awful administrative burden. And so we'd have to adjust the permit sufficiently that we would be able to recoup our administrative costs for overseeing the program or for hiring a consultant to oversee the program.
We're anticipating that the fees that would go towards administering, it would be sufficient to cover those costs. I'd have to look again and see what these consultants were charging, but it was pretty nominal.
Okay. How many complaints do we typically receive in a month?
We average about one a month. And often, we more often get questions, just can I operate a short-term rental?
In the resolution, it talks about if there's noise or disruption. You know, proving that can be difficult. So can we require property owners to install cameras so that there is some evidence of if there is noise or disruption or loud, noxious party?
So we'd have to, we'd have to look into that. Not sure about privacy concerns with cameras and things of that nature. But when we receive complaints or we corroborate that, we'd probably ask neighbors, see if we can get those complaints validated through some other source. Someone were to take a video on their phone and it's timestamped, if the police were called, that's a record of that occurring. So we'd exhaust some remedies to make sure it actually happened.
Okay, and we also got some of the letters that we received, complaints that all the parking was taking. You had like 15, 18 cars that were taking up the neighborhood. Of course, in these post-COVID times, where you shouldn't have multiple households coming together. So I agree that the planning commission, they were talking about having a one car per bedroom would be rather difficult to enforce. Can we just say that you can't have more than four cars at a rental? Because obviously, if they should be carpooling, if they should be, you know, coming to blend in these households at all, but looking for something going beyond the times of COVID, can we limit the number of cars? So as I said, say four cars for a, if they're doing a whole house rental?
The council could place a limit on the number of vehicles. So if that was the direction of the council, some hosts may already have parking limitations based on just the rental agreements themselves.
But it sounds like some don't, because we got the complaints about the 18 cars out there.
Sure. We have to think that one through, just because it may create an enforcement challenge on what cars are associated with the rental versus your neighbor.
All right, I envision this as evolving over time. We're going to make a stab at this tonight, but I see this changing over time. So, okay, with that, Councilmember Carling?
Thanks very much. A lot of what I'm going to say is based on a couple of webinars that I've attended with the League of California Cities specifically on this topic. One representing what has gone on in Truckee and the other one in Palm Springs. Admittedly, neither of those two communities are like Livermore, but I think they're instructive in terms of the way they've approached this. I would also say that the things that I want to talk about aren't necessarily things that I think we should do, but more about things that we need to think about. So let me start with John brought up, limiting it to one. Palm Springs had this very issue. And they had, they had owners that had well more than one. But they did limit it to one, John. And so that might be a reasonable thing to do. I mean, in Palm Springs, they got a lot of pushback. But eventually, people acquiesced and they did grandfather in a few, I think, that had more than one with the expectation that within a year or something like that, they'd get down to one. So I think that might be a reasonable thing to think about, how we would do that. I also think, right now, I think you're suggesting the transit occupancy tax being 8%. I wonder if it shouldn't be 10%, because I'm a little worried about the enforcement on this and what it's going to cost the city. I think the fees you can charge for 140 units might be reasonable, but I'm wondering if we shouldn't increase the TOT from eight to 10 to get some more funding? Because I think what I'm going to get down to at the end here is enforcement. And that is something that I really am concerned about. Another thing that we could do particularly is limit the number of days per month or year. I mean, if you look at the information that we got from from the four couples that live on the problematic court in town, that particular rental has been multiple times, several times a month in July, and I believe in August, like five or six different rentals during July and five or six different rentals in August. I wonder if there isn't a way we can address things like that by limiting the number of days per month or per year? So I'd like for us to think some more about that. I worry about, I mean, again, in Palm Springs, they expect that somebody's going to be, that there's some neighbor, if you will, that also can be contacted if there's a problem. And that seems to work okay in Palm Springs. I just, I find that interesting, because I don't know exactly how that works. I mean, you've got the owner out of town, if they've left the home, maybe. And then you're expecting some neighbor to be there to deal with the problem. And I think that's asking a lot. I don't have an answer to that, but I do think that's a potential problem. Another thing they did in Truckee was they provided registration online. So I think if somebody's, I think that would be appropriate, particularly in this time of COVID, is to create a way that somebody could register their STR online. And there was also, they also provided some workshops. So I mean, I suppose we could do that virtually these days. But for people that have short-term rentals today, they might be able to participate in a workshop where, you know, staff and legal could provide some information and be able to answer questions moving forward. So I think that would be something that we ought to consider. And let me get back to, and then the whole issue of host versus non-host. I know the folks that live out on that court where there have been very frustrated with the person there, or the family that rents out their home would like to see all short-term rentals be hosted. Again, I don't know how that would work. And so if we don't require a host to be on site, then what's the enforcement like? And the enforcement has to be 24/7. And I can't imagine hiring a consultant, as Andy mentioned. And I'm not arguing that we shouldn't have a consultant to monitor and track. But are we going to do that 24/7? Because I don't, I mean, again, getting back, and the best I can do is take experience both from Truckee and Palm Springs in this example and provide what some of the information I gleaned from them. They said enforcement is really the key in this, in getting folks to not disturb neighbors and provide a meaningful and a pleasant experience for everybody. And so I think those are some of my thoughts about this. I do think we have more work to do in terms of whatever this ordinance is going to look like. And I appreciate the time and the effort that you've put into it so far. But I think, and I guess I'd like to hear what the process might be, because I don't understand what is it we would put into effect? If we vote for this tonight, what would be, what would become into effect? I think Andy said was April 1st. Is that sort of the baseline that you're proposing now? And that we could consider some of the other points that I've just made for a later time? How does that work?
Councilmember Carling, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager. And what the council instructed us to do was to bring back an initial ordinance that included the major points that you had collectively determined were important to include in that initial ordinance. As a part of that initial guidance, you also directed us to monitor this over a period of time. And I would recommend that if we have the April 1st start date, that we monitor the item for the calendar year 2021 and bring back a report to the council noting such things as number of complaints, number of short-term rentals that we had, the areas where the complaints were based, what items that we would recommend adjusting. Of course, as we noted in our original presentation, we have hundreds and hundreds of short-term rentals taking place in the community now. The purpose of the regulations were to actually begin to bring the enforcement and the regulatory framework to bear on that. So if we do have bad actors, we can continue to deal with those appropriately. Obviously, the vast majority of the short-term rentals, we don't ever hear complaints about, because the neighbors are, of course, appropriately dealing with those rentals. But your staff would recommend that our initial ordinance here would go into effect and that we would monitor all of the items that you brought up, plus all of the items that we have regulations for here. And C, because obviously, the rentals are going on out there. And what we want to do is figure out what the appropriate regulatory framework to bring those into compliance. Regarding the transit occupancy tax, that is set by an ordinance that would require a vote of the people to change. So we don't have the ability to change that on short-term rentals without ultimately modifying that citywide on all short-term rentals. The items you bring up on enforcement are many of the same that we deal with rentals across the community, essentially on unhoseded rentals, where people rent a property. We do occasionally have complaints about those people who are occupying those rental units. And ultimately, neighborhood preservation are the folks who ultimately deal with that. I think there's some unique things about the short-term rental that we need to make sure that we are appropriately dealing with. And so ultimately, the council has the choice of whether we want to implement this initial set of regulations or whether you want to provide additional direction to staff to make additional regulatory changes and bring those back for a future consideration by the council.
I think I'm okay with your suggestion. I admit that, I mean, I don't want to make it so onerous. So we have 140 units in Livermore, as Andy mentioned. As near as I can tell, there's one out of 140 that really is a bad actor, at least based on what the neighbors tell us. And so I do think it's a balance between recognizing that 139 of these behave pretty well versus one that is really a nuisance for the neighbors. So I do agree that there's a balance. My only suggestion would be, I guess I'd like to hear back sooner than a year, how this is working, maybe more like six months, if my colleagues would agree to that. But I would, because I think this is, this is important. And I guess I'd rather not wait a year, because it's, particularly if people are behaving badly, that would mean that somebody has to wait a year before we revisit this. So I guess the only suggestion I would have per staff recommendation is come back within six months rather than wait a year.
We'd be happy to incorporate that into our recommendations this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Monroe?
No, I am a little surprised at the conversation this evening. What I saw in the staff recommendations was, I thought what we said, go forth and do, and then they went forth and did. So I was prepared to simply say, sure, fine. I've seen very little in the way of commentary on this. I've seen only one negative comment that was actually previously, you know, was, sounded like it came from, but without reading the actual ordinance, because the ordinance addressed the complaint. And I'm remembering the discussions that we had, I can't even remember what, a year ago, where we discussed this at length and had a number of people speak to the importance of this, both as people who traveled, and that would be also me. And, but I'm not talking about me as a commenter now, I'm at this side. But also people who really count on this as part of their income. I, you know, one out of 140 seems, what we heard at that time and what we're hearing now is that basically Livermore seems to be a pretty quiet town for these short-term rentals. And, you know, maybe we have one bad actor, but I believe that actually there was some discussion as to whether that, whether that was a dispute between neighbors or actually a bad actor. It was never clear to me. So it's not even clear what was going on there. In fact, one of the questions I believe that I had was how we So it's not even clear what was going on there. In fact, one of the questions I believe that I had was how we ensured that both sides, you know, when people are behaving well, they are not, there's a way to monitor that side of the equation as well. So I was hoping that we could go forward and, you know, with perhaps your amendment, Councilmember Carling, you know, so we hear about it after six months rather than a year. Go forward. This 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 seems to me to be a fairly baked cake at this point.
Vice Mayor Warner.
I think we should go ahead with this as proposed with the modification on coming back to us in the six months. But I also don't see any reason not to change the limit to one per owner. There's no, so I agree with that suggestion. We're perfectly capable of doing that now. And then the other question is, we have a bad actor. And if you're the neighbor and you're living next to a bad actor, you don't say, oh, well, that's just one in 140, and therefore I have to suck it up. So my question is, isn't this ordinance with what we've got in there able to take out the bad actor? Isn't that the intent?
Yes. That that is provision, oh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Spence.
I was gonna say, yes. So we have provisions that allow us to to investigate complaints that we hear from the neighborhood and based on those complaints, we can start, we'd start with a warning and then we can suspend the permit. So if we had something like that happen within a couple of months, the the property owner could be shut down.
Right. So you know, I see the host versus the non-host, and having a host would might prevent that kind of behavior of the bad actor. But if the other provisions are sufficient to stop it, then we don't need to go there. The limit of the nights per year, I think that's also something that could have an impact. But if we already have the provisions that can take out and stop the bad action, then we don't need to go there yet. The parking limit seems intriguing because that is another issue. And if we could do it, could be interesting, but I don't think we have to figure that one out now. And so I move the recommendation with the comeback in six months with also limiting the number to one per owner.
Did you want to add a requirement of the name and phone number for someone to respond in case there are problems?
Of course.
Okay. All right. So we've got a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it, but I am, I would leave. I do not concur with the one per. I think two is fine. And I can speak to that if you'd like, but.
Not seconding it then.
Well, all right. Well, how about I second it and then we have a discussion about it? Does that work?
Sure, that'll work.
Okay, fine.
Go ahead.
All right, well. Okay, so the discussion is is as follows. The question is, is this something that you're doing as a profession? In which case I would expect it to mimic a hotel. That's 5%, you know, that's some number that's way more than two. Or is it something that you have, it's similar to a rental home plus your plus your secondary home? We have rental homes plus your second or your primary home and your and your rental home all the time. This seems to me to be a similar situation. And, you know, I don't particularly want to have more than that. But I think that it doesn't, it doesn't extend the problem. It doesn't change the nature of the bed of the short-term rental experience in a way that's problematic. And I think that two is, I think two is sufficient to be able to monitor carefully.
Well, the problem is, is when you say everybody's got two, that reduces your housing stock by 140 housing units in the home, in the city. Because if someone is using it for short-term rentals, then it is not available as a rental home. So that's the concern is it reduces the housing stock.
I think that's a really reasonable concern. And so I guess what I would wonder is is there some number of I'm not imagining everybody's going to want to have two. You know, if I want to use my home as a short-term rental, and I do not, then, you know, I'm just gonna, you know, I ran out a room or something. I imagining that's what most people would do. Is there, again, a way we could start with this, see where it goes, and if it turns out to be a problem, we can modify it. Because I agree with you. I don't want to see this impacting the housing market. We've already got enough problems with that.
You start with a limit of one, and if there's a hue and cry from the people that say that's their major income, then we'll adjust it a little more.
Because I said, the main, the main thing that we've heard from Airbnb is that this allows retired people to stay in their home because they can get income, then your revenue by renting out a room.
Fair enough.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, okay, I'm persuaded.
Okay.
So I moved and seconded.
Is is there sufficient clarification for staff on this?
Mayor Marshawn, this is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. I believe, looking at the ordinance before you this evening, with regard to the number of short-term rental permits that may be held by a permitted at any one time to go from two to one, that would envision a change to section 5.90.050 subsection D to change two to one in the grammar recording. We could benefit from additional clarification with regard to the additional responsible party or what the motion was requesting there.
I thought that was already written into it that they had to have an additional party identified, right?
Yes, that's correct.
There is. That's correct.
I don't think that that was an additional. That was just the reason I brought it up is I sometimes wonder how that really works in practice, but I understand that that's common.
Is that understood by the maker of the motion in the second, that it's just reiterating what's already existing in the ordinance before you?
I think that's the point as far as I'm concerned, is that we have a second contact information that I think is responsive.
Andy, can you highlight that particular aspect of the ordinance for the council?
Yes. So a responsible party is a local second point of contact, other than the host that will be available to respond to rental operations and neighbor concerns if the host is not available or on premises. We had envisioned that that person could be able to respond in person within 15 minutes.
And where is that in the the ordinance that we is before us tonight?
It's under the definitions
Page 1332.
Thank you, Jason.
1330. Too far. 1332, okay. All right. G. Okay, very good. Okay.
The one other thing I want to clarify, Councilmember Carling mentioned the expectation that possibly the consultant would have to be 24/7. I think that my understanding of the consultant was monitored the website activity to see if a particular property was being rented, not monitoring the noise level 24/7 from a property. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. The consultant would use software programming algorithms just to track this every couple of days and then generate reports.
So you just have some automatic scanning thing. So it should be not that it's not, it's not a human logging in and scanning all the websites. It's a machine. And the consultant just provides the software to do the monitoring.
Yeah, they would run their own software and generate reports for us on a certain frequency.
Okay, so six months, name and phone number of a responsible party, one permit per host. That was the motion. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Aye.
Councilmember Coomer is absent from the record. Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Aye.
Mayor Marshawn.
Aye. All right, great. Thank you very much. Let's see.
Are we taking a break here?
Do you guys want to take a five-minute break? It looks like, okay, five-minute break then. Let's get back. Oh, it's 9:40. Okay, let's get back here at about 9:46. Great. See you in a couple. Greetings and welcome. Welcome back to the round two of the Livermore City Council for November 23rd. We have come up upon 5.05. We just completed the discussion on 5.04, which was the short-term rentals. 5.05 is the allocation of community development block grant funds. I've been advised that we may want to consider suspending the rules of procedure 7.82 and 7.83 to allow us to complete the agenda tonight. This would eliminate the 8:30 or through the 10:30 PM canvas of the council and that we would not be able to take up new items after an 11 o'clock absolute vote. So do I have a motion to suspend those rules so we can just forge ahead?
I'll move.
Move by Councilmember Carling.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Aye.
Councilmember Coomer. Councilmember Coomer is absent from the record. Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner.
I managed to get some hot tea, so I'm ready.
Mayor Marshawn.
Aye. Thank you. All right, then. Community Development Block Grants.
Honorable Mayor, our Human Services Program Manager, Claudia Young, will lead this item. Ms. Young, you're still on mute.
And Claudia, you're displaying your notes. Perhaps you can display this in the slideshow format without the notes.
You hear me?
Yes.
It is in slideshow mode for me. Can you see it in slideshow?
We're seeing it in slideshow with the next slide.
There we go.
Evening, Mayor, Councilmember, and the public. My name is Claudia Young, and I am the Human Services Program Manager. Today is a rare occasion where we've received some federal funds. And I would like to start by giving just a brief overview for the public about the funds. So on March 27, 2020, the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security CARES Act was signed into law. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development informed the city that it has been allocated 256,869 of community development block grant coronavirus funds. The city may use these for activities to support infectious disease response specifically for COVID-19. As you recall, on June 22, the council took action to allocate the first round of CDVG COVID funds to four providers. We have good news that on September 11, 2020, the city received HUD notification of an additional allocation in the amount of $549,388 from the round three of the CARES Act funds. As a condition of receiving the CDVG COVID funds, the city is required to complete a second amendment to the HUD-approved Fiscal Year 1920 Annual Action Plan. With the city's prioritization of health and safety of the community during the health pandemic, staff identified five activities within the public services category that meet the current strategies to respond to the COVID pandemic. The CDVG COVID criteria for eligible activities includes actions to prepare for, prevent, and respond to the spread of COVID-19. Staff identified and received HUD confirmation on five eligible public service activities that meet the criteria for response to the COVID-19 pandemic in our community. Within the public services category, the eligible activities under the criteria are to continue the access and availability of targeted unchallenged case management and emergency services, health services for infectious disease response within existing health facilities, and food distribution services. Funds will be expended within 12 months. And staff identified CityServe, Access Community Health, Open Heart Kitchen, and Tri, I'm sorry, Open Heart Kitchen. And there's some funds for city administration. The second substantial amendment to the fiscal year 1920 Action Plan activities is included in Exhibit A of the resolution. And I'm projecting the activities also for the public. So today, staff is recommending that council approve the second substantial amendment to the fiscal year 1920 Annual Action Plan, approve participation in the community development block grant coronavirus funds, and authorize our city managers to negotiate and execute related documents, agreements, and modifications with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and recommended sub-grantees. And the last thing is to appropriate 806, sorry, 806,257 total of all of the CDVG funds from round one and two to implement the coronavirus COVID funds. And that concludes my overview, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for staff at this point? Okay, I see no hands raised. In that case, I'm going to open the public hearing. Let's see if we have. Okay, I see no hands raised from the public. Do we have anything on YouTube or Zoom comments?
Here, we're not accepting any comments over YouTube, but we do have a comment on Zoom, City Clerk's office. Please read the comments received over Zoom.
Yes, we have received one comment over Zoom. Heather Greux, G-R-E-A-U-X, 5.05. On behalf of Open Heart Kitchen, I would like to thank the city council and city staff for supporting the emergency food distribution at the fairgrounds. Open Heart Kitchen and Tri Valley Haven took over the operation of the fairgrounds' distribution on November 10. And after just four distribution days, we have served 899 households with a total of 2,958 members. The community members we are serving are truly thankful for the assistance during this difficult time. We are hearing stories of job loss and hardship that are heartbreaking, but I am proud to live in a community that works collaboratively to support its residents. And that concludes the comments over Zoom.
Thank you very much. That, there being no further comments. I'm going to close the public hearing. And let's see. And bring it back to the the council. Let's see. There we are. Okay, so any questions from the council? Okay, do I have a motion? Councilmember Monroe.
I actually have a question as well, but I will make the motion. I'm just curious. I'm thinking about that this is a lot of money on the face of it and during a very hard time. And so I'm wondering if we had our druthers, how much money would we actually need? How far will this actually go? How close is this to keeping people going, given what with what Ms. 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 Greux said? How far will this actually go? How close is this to keeping people going, given, uh, what with, uh, what, what Ms. Ms. uh, Ms. Greau said? Um, that question makes sense. Move on.
This is Claudia. Um, so for the food distribution, it will probably keep the food distribution going maybe for another three to six months, because that's a very large operation. Uh, so the city of Pleasanton is also putting funds, uh, towards the food distribution. Uh, for the city-served case management and emergency funds, uh, that will take them, uh, hopefully through a year. Uh, the emergency funds, I imagine, will go very quickly, um, because of the pandemic. But we're, we're, we're going to try to spread it out through a whole year.
All right, thank you. I just, um, just, I just wanted to get a sense of scale, uh, for, for what, what that actually does. So thank you, and I will make the motion that to accept this to the.
Motion made by Councilmember Monroe. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, uh, Council, by Vice Mayor Warner. Uh, any discussion on that motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Aye.
Councilmember Coomer is absent from the record. Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Aye.
Mayor Marshawn.
Aye. With that, we move on to the, uh, hearing to approve the human, the housing and human services grant priorities. Well, we just heard some of those priorities, so, uh, uh, like the staff report for, uh, the grant priorities, please.
Honorable Mayor, this is Mark Roberts, your city manager and management analyst. Uh, Grace will be giving our overview tonight.
Can everyone see my screen okay?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, I'll be sharing the Human Services Commission's recommended funding priorities for the next cycle of the city of Livermore's housing and human services grants. Every year, the city of Livermore's housing and human services grants bring together multiple federal and local funds to address critical community needs, such as food for seniors, shelters for the homeless, and counseling. The city is an entitlement recipient of the Community Development Block Grant Program, also known as C D B G, and typically receives over four hundred thousand dollars each year. As a member of the Alameda County Home Consortium, the city of Livermore also receives, um, funds from the Home Investment Partnership Funds, typically over one hundred thousand dollars per year. As an entitlement recipient, the city is required to have a citizen participation plan that describes the policies and procedures for public involvement in the grant process. Livermore's Citizen Participation Plan, which was updated in June twenty twenty and approved by city council, requires a public hearing and community outreach regarding pressing housing and human services needs prior to each council, uh, prior to each grant cycle. In fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, projects funded with housing and human services grant funds serve more than five thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight unduplicated clients in Livermore. The Human Services Commission stewards the grant's process from both federal funds and local funds. And as many know, the need for social service dollars is always much higher than the amount of funds available. In order to provide a variety of services for low-income individuals in the community, the Human Services Commission has an application process to select recommended projects, and they do their best to fund a wide range of services for low-income households, people experiencing homelessness, seniors, people with disabilities, and youth. In fall twenty twenty, the city of Livermore, um, human services staff partnered with the housing authority, the school district, and multiple social service providers to solicit input from community members about what social services are most needed. The process involved tabling at service locations and distributing suggestion cards, conducting digital community meetings in English and Spanish, holding a forum with social service providers, and releasing a survey for community members to vote on social services priorities. The Housing and Human Services Grant Community Outreach Process provided really valuable information on current safety net service needs in Livermore, which align very closely with the projects currently being funded by this grant program. The top social service needs that community members identified through the survey and the outreach process were mental health services, affordable housing, and homeless services. Other priority needs included assistance for people with disabilities, food security, and services for seniors. When we disaggregate the survey results by different demographic characteristics, we generally see that the three priorities of mental health, affordable housing, and homeless services consistently rise to the top. Additionally, the need for more support accessing and navigating existing services, particularly for those with language and technology barriers, was a common theme throughout the outreach process. On October twenty-second, twenty twenty, the Human Services Commission considered the community outreach findings and recommended a set of four funding priorities for the next housing and human services grant cycle. Those four priorities are public health, housing, homeless services, and safety net access. Given the need identified by community members, the Human Services Commission and staff recommend the city council adopt a resolution approving the housing and human services grant priorities. That concludes staff's presentation, and we are now available for any questions.
Okay, any questions for, uh, for staff? Okay, I see no questions. Yes, I'm going to, uh, open the public hearing.
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay, I see no hands up. All right, in that case, I'm going to close the public hearing. Uh, bring it back to the council. Any, uh, uh, any comments, any discussions from the council? Uh, entertain a motion.
I'll move.
There's actually at least two comments. There actually are comments.
Okay, comments. Oh.
City Clerk's office, please read the comments received over Zoom.
Yes, the first comment is from Evan Branning, five point six. I am speaking as a private citizen. I want to thank the staff for their presentation and the city for working to meet the needs of our residents. I want to remind council that COVID likely expanded the need. We can anticipate increased need in the coming year, and I hope the city will work to find gap, fill the gaps as we move forward. The next comment is from Gina Benano, five point oh six. Very appreciative of the great work our housing and human services staff is doing during this especially difficult time for vulnerable members of our community. And that concludes our comments over Zoom.
Okay, very good there. Well, thank you, and thanks for catching that, uh, Councilmember Monroe. With that, I, I'll once again close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Uh, if there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move staff recommendation.
Okay, move by Councilmember Carling, seconded by Vice Mayor Warner. Uh, roll call, please.
Member Monroe.
With great appreciation, yes.
Councilmember Coomer is absent from the record. Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Aye.
Mayor Marshawn.
Aye, uh, and certainly appreciate the great work that the Human Services Commission is doing with the housing and human services, uh, from the city. It's, uh, there's always more need than there are resources, uh, and, uh, they all do a great job of stretching those as much as they possibly can. So, uh, with that, thank you very much. All right. Bear with me for a moment. Getting through the agenda. Okay, we're now at, uh, Matters for Consideration. This is six point oh one. This is the oral report from the Director of Emergency Services regarding the COVID nineteen emergency, its impact, and the governmental operations and response. Uh, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Roberts.
I'm the Honorable Mayor. I am Mark Roberts, your city manager and your Director of Emergency Services. Um, last week, the state of California moved Alameda County back into the purple tier based on a recent surge in cases throughout the state and the nation. A number of activities have been limited due to this change. Examples of those include uh, indoor dining, indoor movie theaters, indoor worship services, and indoor fitness activities. In addition, retail activities will still be permitted but reduced to twenty-five percent of maximum capacity. Based on the county moving into the purple tier, I've again closed city offices to walk in traffic, uh, from the public and return to remote service, including phone, email, Zoom, et cetera, during business hours. We already have a limited number of staff on-site during the, in the office at our various locations, um, and we will continue with that. In addition, the library has suspended indoor library services as of last Wednesday. In the meantime, until we are able to resume indoor activities, the library will expand its curbside pickup hours. Last Thursday, the state of California announced a limited stay-at-home order, generally requiring a non-essential work, movement, and gathering stop between ten P M and five A M in, uh, counties in the purple tier for the state's blueprint for a safer economy. For Livermore, the main change due to the curfew will be that outdoor dining will end at ten P M instead of eleven P M as currently permitted. We will continue to work with the county to get additional clarification on details of activities that might be impacted. Um, and at this point, uh, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, any questions for, uh, City Manager? Uh, Councilmember Carling.
Uh, so, Mark, thanks for the report. Um, some of the outdoor dining are beginning to look more like indoor dining. Is there a figure of merit, uh, where remains outdoor dining? I mean, is there a certain amount of open space on, around the walls that are required?
Yes, there actually is. The county has put out, um, some general guidance on that. Um, you cannot have a roof enclosed on four sides. Um, and so indeed, uh, we will be, uh, having our staff go around to make sure that the, uh, outdoor enclosures continue to meet the county guidelines, um, that required multiple sides of that enclosure to be open and, and, uh, overall that there be free airflow through the, uh, through the outdoor tent area. And I have noticed the same thing you have, that, um, while some of them seem very, very open, a few seemed quite enclosed. So we'll be talking to the, to the business owners there to get those back in compliance.
Good. Thank you very much.
Okay, Vice Mayor Warner.
Uh, I've got a question of, you know, we've talked in the past about, uh, getting data as to where the, uh, infection rate is and things we might do. How, how are we doing with respect to getting more details of actionable data?
So at this point, we have data by race and age and by, um, area where folks live down to the zip code range, um, which has, uh, had us conclude that like, uh, all, all of Alameda County and throughout the state, um, our communities of color and in particular, our Hispanic populations are extremely hard-hit, um, and having infection rates, uh, multiple times, um, our other population. Um, beyond the zip code data, we do not have individual household data or address data, um, on infections. Um, and right now, the county does not, um, uh, track or put into a database essentially when they discover where someone is infected, um, by. So from, from that perspective, um, we do know that, uh, certain of our populations are very hard-hit, and we've been working with our county partners and our community partners, uh, and the school district to do outreach to those populations to make sure that our information is not only in English, but is in Spanish as well. Um, and so those are the steps, uh, that we've taken based on the data that we do have. Um, at this point, the, the county, um, does not have more granular data that they are releasing.
Yeah, the, the only reason I'm concerned is if you look at the numbers, uh, we're publishing our rate per, of new cases per hundred thousand is quite high. And, you know, we, we, you would hope we could figure out something we could do that would have an impact.
Yes, um, and certainly our, uh, our cases per hundred thousand look much more like the county. We've been a little above or a little below the county average in that, where our neighbors, uh, essentially, uh, in the Tri Valley have been noticeably below that. One of the biggest differences, of course, we're the most, uh, diverse, uh, both economically, um, and, uh, with our Hispanic population. Um, both people from lower income classes, um, who tend to have more crowded living conditions, um, live in professions that are not able to, uh, shelter in place at home and work from home, um, and our communities of color have been hard-hit. Um, and that's the bulk of the difference. Um, and you are right, there is another portion of the difference, which we just do not have the data in order to, uh, get detailed information on. Of course, we probably do have the most active downtown in the entire Tri Valley as well. Um, one of the things we want to make sure is we keep people safe when they are, uh, in a retail or dining experience. And so you'll notice that our, uh, orders over, uh, the pandemic have been, uh, directed in that direction as well. Um, as the county continues to release more data, we'll certainly take a look at that and see what we can do to adjust our operations.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any further questions, uh, at this point? All right, in that case, uh, let's see. I'm going to open the public comment period. Do you have any public comments?
Mayor, public comment has been received over Zoom Q and A. City Clerk's office, please read the comments.
Okay, the first comment is from Jackie Coda, six point oh one. Did the city emergency service manager ask for proof of cases where originating from indoor dining and business operations before illegally imposing illegal orders on the public imposing arbitrary color-coded identifier that prohibits open, free public accommodation to their businesses? Does the city have plans for businesses that do not comply to the county or governor, governor's illegal mandates and restrictions protocols for a virus that has a ninety-nine point nine percent survival rate? Or will the city remain neutral to those businesses who choose to operate according to the established law? When was the last time emergency manager spoke to the county and state health officers directly and demand answers to the previous questions? Has the city council informed the businesses that is unlawful to require someone to wear a mask? Recommend, um, recommending that someone wear a mask, which is designated by the FDA as a medical device, is the unlicensed practice of medicine, which is a violation of California Business of Professions Code two zero five two. It continues. Have you informed the businesses it is unlawful for them to prohibit someone to enter an establishment, which is a place of public accommodation? U S federal rights law Title II requires and, um, requires free and equal access to all services and facilities without discrimination. The nondiscrimination laws in this state under the California Civil Code fifty-one further prohibits business owners from preventing entry to the full enjoyment of a business establishment. A violation of these laws can result in them being served with a notice of discrimination with the California Department of Justice and the U S Department of Justice. Any claim of store policy or no mask, no service is null, void, and unlawful, and no business may enforce a policy that violates established law. Have you informed the businesses of Livermore that your mask mandate is subjecting them to violation of established law? Okay, and then.
Okay.
What, I've got a couple more. Uh, one from Gina Bonano, six, item six point oh one. Are you able to provide data of local hospitalizations and current capacity of local hospitals? Then one from Brittany Kick. Can you clarify the rules about mask outdoors during youth, um, sports? I have noticed a lot of practice taking place with no masks on kids or adults. My understanding was that with all children over two needed to wear a mask outdoors. Some recent studies are not noting children are often super-spreaders, meaning youth sports may potentially be more dangerous. And, um, that could, oh, six point oh one, Jackie. The other portion of Jackie Coda's will be part of the permanent record, and that concludes our comments over Zoom.
Uh, thank you. It's interesting that there was a, uh, I just saw an article that it was a pickup hockey game, and one individual, uh, infected thirteen out of twenty other hockey players. So, uh, uh, I think Brittany Kick's point is, is very good that, uh, uh, these can be super-spreading events. Uh, okay, that, uh, anything else on, uh, on, uh, uh, YouTube?
Mayor, we're not accepting comments over YouTube, see me?
Okay, all right, uh, in that case, um, there's no more hands up. Very good. I'm going to close the public comment period. Any, uh, questions or comments from, uh, from the council? Okay, I'll, uh, Okay, this is just an information item, so.
Actually, I am curious, can we get a response to Ms. Bonano's question about the data? On local hospitalizations?
Data for local hospitalizations is updated daily on Alameda County site. It is done countywide rather than community by community. And right now, while the county has seen an uptick in hospitalizations and ICU rates, we have significant capacity available. However, of course, the county continues to monitor that. What we normally see is two to three weeks after infection rates start to rise sharply, hospitalization rates will also rise. So the county has noted that they do expect hospitalization rates to continue to rise throughout November. They're projecting that they do have adequate capacity for that at the current time. If you're interested in individual numbers, those are on the Alameda County website and they are updated daily.
I did see that El Paso, Texas is overwhelmed. There are hospitals, they're actually bringing in refrigerated morgue trucks to accommodate the people that are dying from COVID nineteen. There's also a report that they anticipate that at the current rate, Santa Clara hospitals will be overwhelmed within three weeks. So wear your masks, folks. Okay, this is an information item only, so moving on to there's no further comments, we'll move on. Six point oh two, this is resolution ratifying the director of emergency services, emergency order that rescinded Order twenty dash one in March and extended the time to hear appeals.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, deputy city manager Christine Martin will be giving us an overview of this item.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. I am Christine Martin, your deputy city manager. And as you know, on March thirteenth, the city manager acting in his capacity as the director of emergency services issued Order twenty dash one, which suspended and extended the time to hear appeals provided for in the municipal code. Since that time, the city has adapted many of its operations in response to both the pandemic and to the orders issued by federal, state and county agencies to prevent or slow the spread of COVID nineteen. Many of the city's administrative processes have also resumed, albeit under different working conditions. In September, therefore, the director of emergency services issued Order twenty dash eight to rescind Order twenty dash one after finding that the city's administrative processes have sufficiently stabilized to enable staff to process appeals provided for as provided for in the municipal code on a timely basis. The city council must review and confirm the director of emergency services orders at the earliest practical time. Therefore, staff recommends the city council adopt a resolution ratifying Order twenty dash eight, which rescinds Order twenty dash one. And staff is available for any questions you may have.
Okay. Let's see, any questions? Seeing none. Let's see, attendees. Okay, in that case, I'm going to open the public comment period for six point oh two.
Mayor, no comments have been received.
Okay. Very good. Then I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. Do I have a motion to accept the adoption of the resolution?
Also moved.
Okay, moved by councilman by Vice Mayor Warner, seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer is absent for the record. Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Okay, moving on to six point oh three, this is the discussion and appointment of a planning commission applicant. So last week, we had interviews on the sixteenth for the to fill the position on the planning commission that was vacated by Mr. Fergundis. We heard from a number of very qualified individuals. And with that, the discussion of the council. Anybody? Okay, Councilor Carling.
I'll get it started. I first, I'd like to thank everybody for applying. I thought that the the five candidates were all qualified. And I'm sure from my point of view, I was interested in hearing what they had to say during the interviews. I personally thought that two of the individuals sort of stood out in terms of answering the questions that we posed to them. And I'll say that the two individuals that I thought, again, distinguished themselves apart from the other three were Steve Dunbar and Steve Wild. That they both were comprehensive in their answers. I think they both had spent a fair amount of time reading the material that they could find on the website. And so I certainly thought those two, in terms of their oral interviews, set themselves apart from the other candidates.
Okay, anyone else? All right. Well, in that case, would you be willing to make a nominee? Mayor, Vice Mayor.
I had I had my hand up, but I also see Trish was wanting to speak.
Oh, okay, I didn't see her.
Go ahead. I just I I lost the
Your hand went out, okay.
Yeah, but 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 let the vice mayor or mayor elect go first. That's fine. He had his hand up first.
Okay, Vice Mayor.
I would say that I was very impressed with all of the applicants were were really good at answering the questions and you know, different aspects that they they highlighted. But, you know, I've been interviewing people for a long time. And I thought this set was was really good, so I wanted to compliment everybody who applied. And unfortunately, we only have one spot. And I would, and just with that, knowing that there will be some that won't get the spot, I would like to encourage those that won't get the spot to keep involved because we need you as part of the, you know, the city, you know, helping run the city. So with that, though, I would nominate Stephen Dunbar as the new commanding planning commissioner.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Uh, Councilman Monroe, you had some comments?
Well, yeah, so, you know, first of all, that is in fact where I ended up as well. But I wanted to speak to, and I'll say the, I was going to do it in the other order, sort of save save him to the last, you know, but given the amount of work over the, not not simply in the interviews, but over the past several years of engagement. So we have a track record that is actually, I would say unparalleled with the other candidate. So I say that that actually stands out to me as much as anything within the interviews and as well. But I also wanted to speak to each of the the applicants. We have a group that is clearly engaged. Some, I would just, so Mr. Cox and shoot, Ms. Weber, I really would love to see engage, follow the planning commission, come to the council meetings, perhaps get on another commission going forward and reapply. Similarly, with Mr. Wild, I know that his work in the community has been exemplary. And finding a spot on particularly the Human Services Commission going forward might be a place to go as as that opens up. And as far as Ms. Lizel goes, her experience was was extraordinary. And what I would like to see is that applied more to an understanding of Livermore's specific issues and perhaps looking at some of the issues around transportation. All I I agree that everyone really showed a deep commitment and I don't want to lose any of them going forward. As the vice mayor said, we have one spot. But that will, other spots will open up in other places as well, so.
Okay, so let's see, Vice Mayor, your hand is back up.
Oh, I didn't take it down. I I forgot to take it down, but I would, you know, with I would also mention with respect to Mr. Dunbar. We, you know, we always ask the applicants, you know, what planning commission meetings have you attended? It would be simpler to ask him which ones he had.
True.
He's very engaged. Okay, in that case, so the motion is to appoint Mr. Dunbar to the planning commission. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Hi.
Councilmember Coomer is absent for the record. Councilmember Carling.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Hi.
Mayor Marshawn.
Hi. Well, thank you. And again, thanks to all of the the people that did volunteer and fill out the application and came in for the interview. Moving on to six point oh four, this is discussion and direction regarding the process to fill the anticipated council vacancy. You guys take over. I'll be back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. I'll be presenting the first part of this item for you this evening and helping you with any questions you may have as well as your city staff, your city manager and your city clerk can help you as well. Initially, the returns so far from the election indicate that our current vice mayor will most likely be elected as mayor. When he is sworn in as mayor, that will create a vacancy on the city council by operation of law. That vacancy will then need to be filled by the city council pursuant to government code three, six, five, one, two. The city council has two options to fill that position. One, they can call for a special election and fill that by an election, which has to occur no sooner than one hundred and fourteen days. So it can be one hundred and fifteen days and out, but that would require a special election. In the alternative, the city council has the opportunity to appoint an individual to fill the unexpired remainder of Vice Mayor Warner's at-large city council term. Though one of those decisions, either to call for a special election or to appoint somebody to fill that unexpired term, must occur within sixty days of that vacancy being created. Traditionally, the city council meets in December and the current existing council will complete their agenda, complete their term of office and then adjourn C N A D A. At that point, the mayor-elect is then sworn in as the new mayor and there's the passing of the power at that point. And at that point, that's when the vacancy would occur and start the sixty day time period within which to that within which that position must be filled. Now, the city council has proposed this in a variety of ways and it varies from city to city, but you have the discretion to define your process. Now, what the city council here has done in Livermore for the past two elections, one in two thousand and seven, when councilmember Ryder resigned his position and in two thousand and eleven, when Mayor Marshawn, then councillor, was elected to be mayor. The city council at that point gave direction to staff to open an application period, receive applications. And once that application period was concluded, then present those applications to the city council to select which among those candidates expressing interest, they would like to interview. At a subsequent council meeting, the council, council then interviewed those candidates and selected among them who they thought was the best candidate to fill in their remaining term. At that point, that person was selected and ultimately sworn in and then took a seat on the city council dais. The city clerk has prepared a timeline for what that might look like. If the council meeting, we presented the the election results, the certified election results to you as the city council on December fourteenth, as we have done in the past, the current council would then accept that. And then the vice mayor would be sworn in as the mayor-elect. And then the council, that council with also councilmember Carling now being the councilmember for District Four and Brittany Kick also being the councilmember for District Three on the dais would then define the process to go forward. So well, this item was placed upon your agenda to give you a running head start should you want to start thinking about that process now to give staff some direction. So when the summer fourteenth date did come up on you, you're ready to hit the ground running in rapid fashion to fill that position within the sixty days. With that, we're available for questions to help you find your process and to see receive direction from you this evening. We're available for questions.
Okay, any any questions? Now, I recall that when Kathy Brown was elected from council to mayor, that they also chose to appoint a council member as well. Councilmember Carling.
Thanks, just for a reference, what would a special election cost?
Madam Clerk, are you able to provide the information based upon our last election?
Um, this is your city clerk, Marie Weber. Currently, a standalone special election is estimated at nineteen dollars to twenty one dollars per registered voter, which comes out to a little over a million to almost one point two million.
Whoa, okay.
Let's, I move for a point.
Well, I just, I I thought it was important for people to understand the cost.
Well, you know, this is why we worked so hard in, you know, when I became mayor to change the election dates from odd years to even years because we pay the cost for the election. And, you know, for a regular election, it's about three quarters of a million dollars. Whereas if it's a general election, it's significantly cheaper. That's that just even underscores how much more expensive it is. And we're saving that every time because we we are with the general election.
Must be all the postage. It's driving it up, right? Because it wasn't that, right, it wasn't, it didn't used to be that expensive, right? I mean, just not that long ago, it was like eight to ten dollars per registered voter. Now it's twice or more.
Well, you're also talking about you have to have the the translation and you do the different languages and you're printing up the ballot statements and then printing all the ballots. You know, it's not, that's not cheap.
So the the last time we went through this, as I believe the 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 change from one council to the next was on December twelfth. And the interview process for the applicants was on the nineteenth of December. And, right, so it's pretty quick. I don't think we're in a position of having to do it that quickly this time. But I do think that the the calendar that makes sense is that I think this council can approve going down the path of a of an appointment, right? We, is that correct, the city attorney?
So this council can make that decision. Ultimately, the position will not be vacant until you, Mr. Vice Mayor, are sworn in as the mayor-elect. There'll be a different council at that time to implement, but you are the current council in authority to set the direction today.
Right, so my own belief is that today we set the direction, given we don't want it, I don't think we want to spend one point two million. And I and I will say it didn't work, it didn't work out too bad the last time we had to appoint somebody.
Yeah, we made a great choice. That's why I wanted to make it so fast when we did it the last time.
Yeah, so the thing is, it it makes sense to a point. I think we can, and the reason I'm suggesting that we make that decision tonight because we need to let the applicants have time to think about applying. And we need to also have time to craft a, an application. So my own thoughts on this are that tonight we approve an a application process and that we separately submit to the city our thoughts as to what the questions might be and that the city staff come back on the fourteenth with a suggested application that the new council approves. And that at that point, the applicants then know what the application is and that they be given until the beginning of January to fill it out. And that the first meeting in January, we select which ones we want to interview because not all of the applicants that are applied are selected for an interview. And then in the meeting, And then in the meeting between the two regular meetings in January, that the council, uh, in, uh, goes through the interview process and selects the replacement. And what that'll allow us to do is have a new council in place by the end of January and be in good position for when we go through our goals and priorities. So I think that's a reasonable schedule. It's not as jammed as the, uh, the last time, 11 years ago, whatever it was nine years ago. But that I, I think it makes sense, so that's my recommendation as to what we do.
Councilmember Monroe.
Yeah, so, so, uh, I, I, I have a sense you might have thought about this a little bit before this meeting.
Been thinking about it for nine years, I guess.
I, I, I actually like that process a lot. There, there's two things I'm wondering about. In terms of thinking about questions, is there a way that we could easily solicit, easily and quickly solicit questions from the public? I'm curious to know what they'd like to see in a council member. And use those questions, so that's number one. And number two, um, you know, a, as we've been working to, towards, uh, equity and inclusion, is there, can we ensure that we are reaching out for applications? Making sure that we have, uh, translations, we're reaching out into the communities that might not otherwise apply? Or that we, you know, that, yeah.
Uh, councillor Carling.
I think the process is, is finite. Is it clear to everybody that this is, uh, for two years? Am I right about that?
Clear to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is for two years, you're right.
I just, maybe that's the application, but I think it's important to, for people to recognize that it's for two years to, to fill the balance of the, uh, mayor-elect's, uh, term.
It's, it's actually just under two years and that's an, but that's an important distinction because it doesn't, uh, trigger the term limits.
Well, I understand, uh, but I do think it's important for people to, to know that and maybe that's on the application.
Well, yeah, I think there's one other thing that, uh, you know, as you're, as long as you're clarifying things. The spot that Trish and I currently occupy are citywide. So this, uh, backfill position is not restricted by any kind of districting thinking.
That's right, but the person, if they, if they get elected, if they're chosen from, and living in District Three and Four or Four, they would not be able to run unless they moved in two, in two years.
That's also true too. Maybe.
I know that, right.
Right, okay.
I'm just saying that.
Yeah.
Well, again, there's precedent for that. When, uh, Kathy Brown was elevated, uh, her, uh, Neil Riley was appointed to the position, uh, who had no intention of running in, in two years. So that's when that council seat opened up completely and we weren't in districts then. Uh, but when he was appointed, it was with the understanding it was only for two years and he didn't, didn't intend to run.
Well, my point is, is that I think that also needs to be made clear on the application.
Sure. I, I think the, the bottom line is that there is no restriction on any, anyone from anywhere in Livermore can apply.
Yeah.
Yes, but it has implications for 2022.
Right.
Sure.
But they don't, but that doesn't restrict who can, who can apply if they wants to.
Want them to know what the future holds.
Sure.
Okay.
Can, can I, uh, could, could we get a response, uh, or what's the thought about reaching out to the community for a couple of questions? And is there, is that even possible to do in a reasonable way?
I suppose perhaps we could put it on our Facebook, you know, monitor that.
Nextdoor, we could put it on Nextdoor.
Well, and then, yeah, because Stephanie Gideo puts out on Nextdoor and she puts out our Facebook. So that might be a, uh, a way to get some questions.
City manager.
So the, the technical answer to your question is yes, um, we could request questions. Then the council would need to meet, um, as a whole and determine which of those questions they would ask. The challenge with that is the whole world would know that those are the questions you're asking. And if that was a concern for you during the interview process, that you'd be making public at least some of the questions. You know, that would be something to take into consideration. The process that was outlined before noted that each council member would essentially submit one or two questions that would be incorporated into that and then you would ask those. But essentially those would become public at the moment that you, you asked those questions. So it's a different process and it comes down to what the council wishes to accomplish and how quickly they wish to accomplish it.
Well, so here's a couple of things. There, there are two sets of questions. One is on the application and one is in the interview. Uh, what I was speaking to was the application. They're obviously public because you're, you're, you know, you're being asked to fill them out on your application. The second set of questions, uh, is one that you wouldn't want to necessarily reveal in advance. Right, so I'm speaking to the first set. I think you just talked about the second set.
And those would be the ones that you could ask the community for, the ones for the application.
Well, yeah, for the application are the, would, would be no problem. I think the, the only difficulty is, is it could be a lot of questions. But I don't think it hurts to ask the community what they are and leave it to staff to call the good ones from that as well as the, um, the one, get the good ones from whatever the council members suggest. And then we come back on the 14th and we, um, we just have a regular package and we, we select the questions. But I think the, we solicit the questions, you know, staff solicits the questions from the council, the community, puts together what they think is a good application and then we adjust and ratify it on the 14th. It's not going to be, you know, 50 questions, but I do think.
Could be.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, right. Well, maybe that's the, uh, that'll select the, the applicants right there, making a hundred questions. But the, uh, or, you know, make it a thousand-page package they have to read. Right, but anyway, let's, let's, in all seriousness, if there's a way to ask what the questions are, let's do it. But we're gonna call it down to just, you know, five questions. But the, the thing is, are there any questions out there at the moment uh, that we care about that should signal to the applicants what the process is?
Of course, at a thousand pages for the application, it would still be significantly smaller than our packet tonight.
Exactly, exactly.
Our packet tonight was just shy of 1,400 pages.
That's what it may be, yeah.
That, that might discourage a few folks, you know, one of those every two weeks.
If I understand the direction of the conversation now, it would be to solicit questions from the public to have staff essentially, uh, take a first cut at cutting that down to a handful. I heard the number five or so, um, put out. And that those questions would ultimately be reviewed and ratified by the council, perhaps along with an attachment, the, all of the questions that were submitted. And that, uh, those questions then would be part of the application process. And I guess the question is, would the council wish to submit questions for that same process? That they would want to make sure that their questions would go on the application process?
Yes, yes, that's what I suggested when Trish, it, it expanded it to the community. I don't think she meant to exclude the council.
Oh, no, no.
Very good. So we would take questions from the council and we would compile those, turn those for you to make a choice on. Request questions from the community, uh, make a recommended, uh, list, but include all of the questions that you could choose from so that you could adjust that. And then on the 14th, um, the new council would approve, um, they, uh, the application going out at that point, including the questions that would be included on that.
Right.
Very good.
Good.
Do we have to vote or is it, we're done?
Jason, what are you looking for?
This is just discussion direction, so I think, Mark, do you need additional direction or do you have it?
I think, I think I've got it until we bring it back on the 14th and it isn't what you want. But my understanding is we're bringing back an application, a timeline, a set of questions submitted for them, from the community and a set of questions submitted from the council. You'll finalize those questions, ideally from a shortlist. Um, and then you'll direct us to put that application out and you'll ratify the timeline for when those applications will be due, uh, when the applications will take, uh, the application process or the interview process will take place. And then when the person would be appointed.
Right, and I think I outlined a suggested timeline.
Yep, and we'll look and I, the only question I had is the week in between your two meetings in January includes a holiday on the Monday. We would look for an alternative, uh, date, uh, within that week, um, to meet.
Right.
Looking for, so.
Do we need to vote of appointment versus a special election?
Jason, what are you looking for as far as is direction enough on that item?
That's direction, at this point, that decision will be made by the new council when the vacancy occurs.
Oh, okay.
So you'll do that on the evening of the 14th when you are seated as the new council. And that would happen, obviously, right before we worry about the application.
Right, okay.
So we're gonna put out on, uh, Nextdoor or the city's Facebook, the, uh, polls for questions for the council.
We would put it out using our normal channels and I'll let our trained professionals make sure that we cast a wide net. And I understood that, uh, extra emphasis to make sure that we're trying to reach out to, to groups that we might not other, uh, otherwise, uh, put information out. But we'll do our very best on that front, but we understand the objective is to, to solicit questions that people have the opportunity to help submit a question that'll help choose their next council member.
Because one of the things that we have found is that people say, well, we want, you know, the, we want someone to, to listen to the public. Well, we just got through a process where we listened to thousands of members of the public. Uh, and people still didn't realize that we had listened to the public. So, uh, it should be really interesting to see what the, the questions are. We just, uh, uh, we, we've heard someone say, well, the council should listen to the, the people. And then last week, there were a number of folks that said, well, the city council should change their mind and not put more parking in the downtown because we're not going to need parking with, because it's post-COVID. So be careful what they ask for, because this might get it. So it's, uh, a very challenging, uh, time, so I'll be curious to see what the questions are. All right, so you got sufficient direction on that. Is there any public comment on that? Uh, I look over here.
Mayor, no comment has been received.
Okay, very good. You know, close the public comment period, move on to six point oh five. This is a resolution authorizing an extension of the exclusive negotiating rights agreement, the E N R A with Shakespeare's Associates.
Honorable Mayor, our deputy city manager, Christine Martin, will be giving us the overview on this item.
Good evening, once again, honorable mayor and councilmembers. I'm Christine Martin, your deputy city manager. Uh, as you will recall, back in June of 2018, consistent with the approved downtown plan, council authorized staff to enter into an exclusive negotiation, negotiating rights agreement, an E N R A with Shakespeare's Associates, Inc. for development of a black box theater. The approved downtown plan includes a black box theater and science center to be located within a cultural facilities easement within Stockman's Park on the western edge. The black box theater will be a flexible space seating about 150, affordable to small and mid-sized performance groups. Black box theaters typically are designed with plain black walls to provide flexibility in the stage and seating configurations. The, uh, the black box building, uh, black box theater will include an outdoor stage area that engages and activates Stockman's Park with a variety of live music and outdoor performances. Both the science center and theater will utilize private funding to cover design, construction, operations and maintenance costs. The E N R A with Shakespeare Associates expires on December 31st of this year. Substantial progress toward the completion of a draft disposition and development agreement has been made. However, activation of the city's emergency operations center to address the COVID-19 pandemic has led to delays. An extension to June 30th, 2021 is requested to allow sufficient time to complete negotiations and return to council for review and approval of the disposition and development agreement. I'd like to also note that the resolution attached to this staff report, um, has a typo that will be corrected to the extension date, again, as I said, uh, to June 30th of 2021. That concludes staff's presentation and we are available for any questions.
All right, any questions? Um, seeing none. Let's see. Okay, do we have any public comment for that, roll up the public comment period?
Mayor, we have received public comment over Zoom, city clerk's office, please read the comments received.
All right, this is from Livermore Shakespeare. We have one comment, by the way. Public comment item six point oh five from Katie Marcel, Livermore resident and managing director of Shakespeare's Associates, Inc. Thank you, mayor and city council for considering the extension of our E N R A. We are very anxious to move forward with our plans to build a black box theater in downtown Livermore. We are grateful for our positive working relationship with city staff and are pleased to report we have received another significant donation to the project last week. We are so excited to see Stockman's Park open and can't wait to bring people together and, on the park when it is safe again. And that concludes the comments over Zoom.
Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, all right, uh, with that, I'm going to close the public comment period. Looking to see if we have any, uh, okay, so bring it back to the council. Any comments or questions from the council or do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Hold a second.
Okay, move by councillor Monroe, seconded by Vice Mayor Warner. Discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe.
Aye.
Councilmember Coomer is absent for the record. Councilmember Carling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner.
Aye.
Mayor Marshawn.
Six point oh five, the Small Business Assistant Grant Program, update and potential changes to the eligibility requirements.
Honorable Mayor, your director of innovation and economic development and Adam Vanderwater will be giving the staff presentation on this item tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn, councilmembers. Adam Vanderwater, your director of innovation, economic development. Pleased to be here this evening to give you an update on the citywide Small Business Assistance Grant Program and to seek your approval of three recommended adjustments to the program. You'll recall that the $2 million general fund program was authorized by council on August 24th. Aid Livermore small businesses working to resume operations during the COVID-19 pandemic and subsequent economic shutdown. Given the uncertainty duration, uh, duration and recovery from the pandemic, the program was designed and authorized as a grant rather than a loan program. It is not designed to act as general purpose financial assistance and expenses like rent, utilities and payroll were for the focus of federal aid programs such as the Paycheck Protection Program and Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, uh, were not considered eligible for reimbursement. Instead, the program reimbursed half the cost of one-time expenditures that helped businesses resume operations, adapt and find new economically sustainable operating models through the end of the public health emergency. The maximum reimbursement amount was set at $20,000 for an expenditure of at least $40,000 and the minimum reimbursement amount was set at $2,000 or an expenditure of at least $4,000. Since the application portal went live on August 31st, the city has received 106 applications and completed its review of 93% of them within an average of three weeks, including requests for more information from the applicant. Nearly half of all applicants met the eligibility required, the criteria and have been approved for funding. These 50 applications have been paid a total of $381,960 and 78 cents for an average of $7,639 per business. These funds have helped a broad cross-section of industries and business types adapt to the changing conditions, including an events production company purchasing equipment necessary for converting from live event production to video streaming of events. Bar adding a kitchen to allow for earlier reopening as a restaurant under county reopening guidelines. A yoga studio purchasing equipment necessary for live streaming fitness classes to clientele in their homes. Retailer purchasing outdoor displays for its holiday decor. A dental office installing air disinfection systems and physical barriers to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. And a construction company purchasing personal protective equipment for employees to comply with new return to work guidelines. I want to take a second to thank my team for their diligence administering this program who are currently working to get another seven applications through to completion. However, we've learned that forty-nine applications were deemed ineligible. And those were for the following reasons, one, business was too large to qualify as a small business as per its gross receipts. Five businesses had fewer than two full-time equivalent employees. Twenty-one businesses requested reimbursement for ineligible expenses such as rent, utilities, and payroll. And twenty-two requested a reimbursement amount below the two thousand dollar minimum threshold. So in an effort to reach more business and provide more support through this pandemic and this winter season, I wanted to bring to you this evening three options for program adjustments to help serve them. Option one would be to eliminate the minimum employee requirement. This would expand the pool of businesses eligible for program funding to include the five businesses that did not meet the two employee minimum threshold. And it's possible that others did not apply as they were not eligible under the original program rules. Option two would reduce the minimum expenditure requirement. This would expand the eligibility for an additional twenty-two applications that did not meet the minimum threshold for reimbursable expenses and possibly entice additional businesses to apply. The council wishes to consider a lower threshold, staff would recommend a minimum of reimbursement amount of five hundred dollars to require a minimum of one thousand dollars of eligible expenses. And then the third option is in new developments, even since the composition of the staff report in your packet, which is to take advantage of the Alameda County CARES Act matching funds which are administered by the East Bay Economic Development Alliance. On November tenth, the Alameda County Board of Supervisors authorized, and then on November sixteenth, the East Bay Economic Development Alliance announced the availability of eight million dollars in federal CARES Act pass-through funds for businesses in Alameda County. The first five million of these funds will be distributed in increments of five thousand dollars to businesses across Alameda County on a countywide lottery basis. Our office has been working to promote the program through social media, through the city's website, and through our partners at Livermore Downtown, Inc., the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce, and the Wine Growers Association. And as a result, as of this morning, East Bay ADA has received one hundred and seventy-nine applications from Livermore businesses who will be entered into this countywide lottery. The remaining three million of that, of eight million dollar federal CARES Act funds would be dedicated to cities in Alameda County who elect to match these funds dollar for dollar. The council wishes to take advantage of these matching funds, staff would recommend an allocation of up to one million dollars from the existing original two million dollar Small Business Assistance Grant Program authorization for this purpose. If fully utilized, this could leverage up to one million in city funds to receive up to two million dollars in total grant funds, which would fund up to four hundred Livermore small businesses at five thousand dollars per business. Under the program's eligibility requirements, and this is set by the county board of supervisors and administered by East Bay ADA, businesses must have, have between one and twenty-five total employees, must have been shut down for some period of the global health emergency or laid off at least one employee, must agree to follow the state and county public health department COVID nineteen guidelines, have a valid business license and W nine form, and then can use those funds for any purposes, including operating costs like rent, utilities, and payroll. There are some exclusions, including chain businesses not headquartered in Alameda County, financial institutions, banks, lenders, landlords, or residential or commercial businesses, excuse me, landlords of residential or commercial businesses, multi-traded companies, and nonprofit entities would not be eligible for these funds. But allocating these funds would commit our city general funds to the county's CARES, CARES Act funding criteria, which would be administered by Alameda County and limited to businesses in Livermore. So these funds would be dedicated to businesses that apply from the city of Livermore. And under federal guidelines must be paid by the end of the calendar year. It would require an agreement between the city and Alameda County for the transfer of funds. And if selected, staff intends to return to you for ratification of this action at your next meeting on December fourth, fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. So that's a lot to, to take in, but in conclusion, electing to implement these three options would build on the initial success of the program, would expand the pool of eligible businesses to include smaller businesses with fewer employees or expenses, would leverage federal CARES Act funds to provide much-needed flexible grants to support our small businesses, and would retain approximately twenty-five percent of the original two million dollar authorization to fund new applications as we enter the winter season under stricter public health orders. That concludes our presentation and we're happy to take any questions or comments.
Okay, any questions? Council, vice mayor Werner?
Not so much a question, but a thank you for moving so quickly on the matching funds. And the conversations I've had with the various small businesses, you know, for the last several months, I'm sure that these adjustments to the program, options one and two are, would be most welcome.
Okay, council member Monroe.
Trying to get a picture there. So I think I understand what I heard, which is we could do option one, we could do option two. So regardless, clearly saying thank you very much to Alameda County, sounds like a great plan. I, I'm unclear as to how this affects option one and option two and what our responsibilities are beyond that. I mean, it's just everything in Alameda County takes over for that, maybe it's just late.
So if I could just say real quick, Trish, you know your favorite, favorite phrase?
It's a both and, great.
It's, it's not, it's not, and there's no or here, it can be and.
Great, okay, so can we just do all, all three, option one, option two in the county?
Yes.
Fantastic. The one other concern I had is, if, if we're going to the county and the county is going to be working with people, can we make sure that we're also doing some more handholding with them as well? And, you know, Bob, you can answer or Adam can answer.
Oh, really, right.
Either way, I'm serious, I'm, I'm good.
No, Adam, Adam, I just.
Yeah, I had a conversation today with Stephen Bader, the director of the East Bay Economic Development Alliance. With the city would enter into an agreement with county council. And they are in the process of finalizing those details, so we will continue to have conversations with both the county and with East Bay ADA to administer any funds you want to authorize that see.
Okay. All right, well, I, I think opening this up as much as possible at this time is, it sounds like a, I'm, I'm really glad the money is available, both from us and from the county.
If I could also comment, and the reason I'm thanking Adam and staff for moving so quickly, I don't, if you focused on the fact that a number of cities are not able to do so, which means that by the staff here having moved as quickly as possible, there's a real good chance we'll get a larger share of the pie.
So a question, if the business, so if we modify with the options one and two, will the businesses have to reapply, submit a new application, or can the city just add the new parameters to the existing application?
For options one and two, which are controlled by the city of Livermore, we have the application materials from each applicant, including their receipts, their business license, their W nine, and their contact information. And in most cases, we'll be able to determine which were just below the minimum threshold, both for employees and for expenditures, and be able to process them directly.
So they won't have to reapply, okay, great, thank you.
We would put the information out in hopes that others that didn't think they should apply would be eligible to submit a new application.
Okay.
And honorable mayor and members of the council, this is Mark Robb, your city manager. We do want to be clear that if you ultimately agree with staff's recommendation to authorize me as your city manager to submit a letter of interest on your behalf unto the council essentially immediately. And then participate in the program up to the parameters which we have set, which is up to a million dollars of matching funds by the city. As Adam noted, two million dollars total, including the million dollars of county dollars. And to allow that processing to take place and the funds to be processed. And on the fourteenth, you would come back for a ratification of that activity. But the activity would be essentially mostly complete at that point, so I do want to be clear. And if you wish to give other direction, for example, delay the program until the fourteenth, so you can review it in detail. But if you're comfortable with those general guidelines, your staff would essentially proceed given those guidelines, and you would return essentially with the ratification of activities that would have already been completed at that point.
Because this has to be paid out by the end of the year, so that's a pretty tight timeframe.
Which is why we're pushing you to authorize us tonight and ratify the activity on the fourteenth. That's not a traditional approach, but given the extraordinarily tight timeframe for the applicants to participate in this, we want to give them as much time as possible, and we do want to ultimately get those funds out the door.
Okay.
I, I would point out, some of our neighboring cities, you know, held special council meetings tonight to try and get it moving there as well, but I, I, you know, everything I understand of what you're recommending here, I'm definitely in favor of.
For those who may be listening at home, the, the timeline, as the city manager mentioned, is quite tight. And applications will be due one week from today, so we will be doing our diligence to try to get this out through the city's channels and the city's partners' channels. But this is funding that needs to be applied for very quickly, because as was mentioned, all funds need to be expended by December thirtieth of this year.
All right. Okay, public comments.
Mayor, we have received public comment over Zoom.
Okay.
City clerk's office, please read the comments received.
Okay, this comment is from Brittany Kik. These must be paid by the end of the year, correct? That's a tight turnaround if you are pushing for this on to the fourteenth. Next is from Jesus Orozco. If Alameda County is allocating only five million, how can a city like Livermore match one million? If all cities matched one million, how, how would Alameda County match us all? Sorry if this is a dumb question. And that concludes the comments over Zoom.
Okay, very good, thank you. I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Comment on the question about how the city of Livermore can do it and other cities can't?
Well, because we've got a good staff.
That's right, and we've got a visionary mayor-elect who came up with the two million dollar grant idea.
So honorable mayor, the technical answer to the program is, is the funds can potentially run out. But you are correct, not every city is choosing, in fact relatively few are choosing to do the matching program for the three million dollars. So the county has a five million dollar program which they control completely. They have an additional three million dollars which they're asking for a local match. We wanted to have a match of substantial size. So on the, on the outside chance, we do get that many applications, which would be a very large number of applications here locally, that we have enough funds. But technically, it is possible that the county could run out of those additional funds, but our match only goes against businesses that are in the city of Livermore that did not win in the countywide lottery for the five million dollars. So we're feeling pretty good that this will have pretty good coverage for folks to turn in a application that follows the rules.
Okay. Okay, so.
So I'll, I'll move, we take options one, two, and three.
All right. Moved by vice mayor Werner, seconded by council member Monroe, roll call, please.
Member Monroe?
Aye.
Council member Coomer is absent for the record. Council member Carling?
Aye.
Vice mayor Werner?
Aye.
Mayor Marshawn?
Aye. All right, thank you, moving on to six point oh seven. Discussion and direction regarding follow-up letter to the county regarding the county development and adoption of solar policies.
Deputy city manager Christine Martin will handle your final item of the evening.
And once again, good evening, honorable mayor and council members, this is Christine Martin, deputy city manager. Per council direction, the city sent a letter to Alameda County back on August twenty-seventh of this year regarding development and adoption of solar policies. And on October twenty-first, the city sent a letter to the county specific to two proposed solar developments in the north Livermore area of the county. In that letter, the city asked the county, or specifically the East County Board of Zoning Adjustments, to continue both projects to a future date after the county had adopted solar policies. Subsequently, at your last meeting on November ninth, council directed staff to send a follow-up letter with recommended criteria in specific policy areas. A draft letter is included in your packets this evening. Staff is seeking direction on the letter content. And with council direction, we will submit the letter to the county tomorrow morning prior to the East County Board of Zoning Adjustments meeting to consider one of the two solar projects at their one thirty PM meeting. And this concludes staff's presentation, we're available for questions.
Any questions for staff? Okay, with that, I'm going to open the public comment period. Do we have public comments?
City clerk's office, please unmute speakers for public comment.
Am I on?
Yes, you are.
Okay, sorry for the late night. I urge you to adopt the draft letter, the Ermis project violates numerous measure D policies, particularly policy thirteen, which allows, only allows infrastructure necessary to adequately serve East Alameda County or improve public facilities, but not increase them. The Ermis project clearly does not fit into this policy. Seventy-five percent of the power generated by the project will go to San Francisco, I think there's already a contract for it. You probably read in the independent article that even the county planner reviewing the project wrote, nothing in any document anticipated a land use of this magnitude across North Livermore. He also said it did not pass the laugh test. California Fish and Wildlife has identified numerous environmental issues, which Ermis appears to just be ignoring. Before any utility scale power or utility scale solar development goes forward, the county needs a renewable energy policy which identifies low conflict locations and provides extensive public input before anything happens, thank you very much.
Here's Frederick. Okay, we have Tammy Rice, Tamara Rice.
Hi, this is Tamara Rice, Tammy is fine, good evening again, and so nice to spend the evening with all of you till after eleven, way past my bedtime.
That's what we do.
I just wanted to echo what Michael Frederick said. You know, we had a representative from Friends of Open Space and Vineyards, which I am representing tonight at your meeting in August, I believe, where you initially agreed to send a letter. And we thought that was a very excellent, appropriate action to take. And we do support the letter that is in your packet tonight. One of the reasons that we're so concerned is, you know, that they're going forward in the county with these precedent-setting projects without a solar policy in place. And in addition to the, the concerns that Michael pointed out of, you know, violating measure D, very serious issues with respect to the environmental analysis and the unwillingness to comply with requested biological mitigation for endangered species. You know, there's also, I think, problems with the cumulative impacts analysis. And that's really due, I think, because they don't have a policy in place. So you really don't know what kind of projects could be out in North Livermore, where the best place for them is, and what's going to be anticipated down the road. So in for them is, and what's going to be anticipated down the road. So in the absence of this policy, you know, the environmental analysis is really lacking. And the city, by sending this letter, reiterating this position, can hopefully, you know, inform the Board of Zoning Adjustments that this whole direction is really not the right direction for North Livermore, not at this time. We all support renewable energy. My organization does. We believe in it. We understand the impacts of climate change. But we also know that good planning involves policies, good land use planning. You have to be prepared, and you have to look at the big picture. And you don't want to rush in, in the wake of a climate change to just approving anything, because you're still going to have to live with this decision for a long time down the road. So again, I urge you to send this letter, and thank you for any support you can give. Good night.
Thank you. Merlin Newton, Senior.
Good evening. I would like to thank the mayor, vice mayor, and council on calling on Alameda County to develop a solar policy before moving forward with these two large-scale solar facilities in North Livermore. Like the previous callers have said as well, we all want renewable energy, but it has to be done where it will have the least amount of impact on the environment, natural habitat, wildlife, and scenic vistas. And so, yes, I'd also recommend you forward this letter as well. And again, thank you, and thank you for your time.
Jean King.
Okay, I think I've unmuted it.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Yes, thank you very much. It's way past my bedtime. But I want to agree with the other speakers who came before me. It's very important that the county develop a policy. I thank you very much for putting that so strongly in your letter. I also like the fact that you've added some more things to your letter than I think were in the previous ones with some specific things, like they should clean it up. They need to clean it up at the end, and that they should do the carbon sequestration. That's a very good idea. I support that, too. And then you said the agricultural biodiversity. It isn't just the agricultural biodiversity. We want to make sure that everything is preserved there with all the natural resources and the, the, you know, red-legged frog and the ox and all those things whose habitat is there. So it's not just agriculture diversity, it's diversity of the area in general, and the siding and everything. It is very important to have a policy to set the precedent for what goes there. I cannot imagine them just doing it haphazard without any policy. And there has been a study that's done that there are other lands that are very possibly much better than this land, to put it. And we should also be considering diversified distributed power, distributed solar power, not just these big urban facilities like that. So anyway, thank you very much, and I support the letter, and thank you for doing it. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. King. Tieska O'Brien. It's like old times here.
Hi. Just for the record, my name is Tyler O'Brien. Sorry for the typo there.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, mistake on my end. I'd just like to echo what everyone else, the previous comments have said. First off, thanking all of you for being up late at night and getting through all of these subject matters. It really shows that, you know, Livermore and its elected officials really take their job seriously. So thank you. Yeah, I don't think North Livermore, or the city of Livermore deserves to be a solar company's guinea pig without a solar policy in place for the county. You know, this region is biodiverse. It's an agricultural region. Historically, it's protected by Measure D, and this company, along with county staff, has somewhat failed to mitigate many of the issues that have been brought up or to pose mitigation efforts in their final EIR. And so I definitely urge the city to continue with this process of sending this letter, asking that a solar policy be adopted prior to the approval of these two projects. Even if a solar policy is adopted, if these two projects go forward, they will most definitely be used as precedent-setting as far as maybe additional infrastructure being built in this region, which could permanently have a negative impact on the northern region of Livermore, could detract from land value, it could detract from tourism, it could have many negative impacts. And I'd just like to echo what everyone else said. We do fully support the idea of renewable energy, and we know that the earth is in a period of intense warming, and that renewables are needed now. However, I think we all can agree that we need to think very carefully about how we move forward, and that preserving the environment, carbon sequestration, preserving biodiversity are equally as important as renewable infrastructure. So thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I see no more hands raised on the attendees. Do we have anything on Zoom?
We do. City Clerk's office, please read the comments received over Zoom.
Okay, the first comment is received from Marissa Mitchell. Public comment item 6.07. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Marissa Mitchell, and I represent Intersect Power and Aramis Solar and Storage Project proposed for the North Livermore Valley. We appreciate the city council's development of a thoughtful set of criteria for Alameda County to consider as it develops a comprehensive solar policy. As you may know, the city's TNP committee directed staff to initiate a solar policy study, and in the meantime, the process pending solar project applications, case by case, including Aramis, which last week received unanimous approval from the E B C E Board of Directors and its power purchase contract, which has also received a letter of support from the city of Hayward today. Your suggested criteria related to aesthetics, power generation, carbon sequestration, agriculture biodiversity, citing end-of-life strategy, resource use, and recyclability hit the mark, and Aramis project fulfills the suggested criterion. The next comment is from Gina Benano, item 6.07. The citing of the renewable energy facilities, including solar, is a complex issue and deserves to be planned in a comprehensive and thoughtful manner. In the city of Livermore, we use our general plan and development code to codify policies and specify land uses for which guide decision-making. The process of developing these governing documents requires broad input from the community and all stakeholders. It seems sensible for the county to apply this approach in a similar manner to the citing of the renewable energy facilities rather than making decisions on a case-by-case basis. I support the city, I support the council's input to the county on the matter, and support communicating the recommended criteria. And per our policy, we have received multiple comments from Jean King, and it will be part of the permanent record. The next comment is from Brian and Marion Oxel. I want to voice my support for Aramis Solar Project. As consumers of energy, I feel that it is duty of the community, of this community, to cite power generation infrastructure within our community. And that concludes the comments over Zoom.
Okay, very good. In that case, I'm going to close the public comment period, and seeing no, I see Councilmember Monroe, you've raised your hand, followed by Vice Mayor Warner.
Um, I'm just, I'm impressed that everybody seems to love this letter. Its purpose is simply to ensure that we have, you know, we've already asked the county for, to make a, a, a comprehensive policy. My intention in bringing this forward last, last council meeting was to ensure that we have a more representative set of criteria. I'm glad everybody who's commented agrees across the spectrum.
All right. Vice Mayor Warner?
I was gonna say the same thing. It's my understanding, this letter just clarifies some of the criteria in the requested comprehensive solar policy. It doesn't reaffirm that we've asked for that or negated. It just simply refines the request.
All right. Very good. So this is, let's see here.
So I'll move. We send the revised letter.
I'll second.
That was what I was looking for.
I was waiting for you, Trish. I mean.
I, you know, you know, everyone's saying how late it is. I'm two hours ahead of you.
Yeah. Well, it's only, only 1:30.
You know, it's, it's, I'm dedicated to my city. What can I say?
That's right. Okay, so it says recommend the discussion and direction. So I guess we can go ahead and entertain the motion. Then moved by Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Any discussion of that motion? Seeing the discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmember Monroe?
Aye.
Councilmember Coomer is absent for the record. Councilmember Carling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Warner?
Aye.
Mayor Marshawn?
Aye. All right. So with that, I think we'll pass on the council reports and matters initiated. Actually, we sort of have to. This is something just really burning here.
Oh, well, John, I've got a list way long. I was desperate to go through it.
Bet you were.
I'd just like to mention that Bangcat had their gala Saturday virtually and raised nearly $200,000. So despite, yeah, despite the fact that we couldn't do it in person, they did, they had a nice job, and it was very interesting and very well, well-run event, actually. And so, good for them.
Very good. Does anybody else have a burning matter initiated or?
Oh, I just, I wanted to compliment you for getting us through this so efficiently. I was really, I was afraid we were going to get to 1:30 our time, not just Trish's time.
That's, yeah, no, I was, I was prepared for a 3:00 AM central time meeting.
I've done a couple of those.
Great, great job.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. It's, it's that many years of experience, you know, that that's you sort of move this thing along. Okay, so with that, we are going to be adjourning to a special city council meeting on Monday, December 7th, at 3:00 PM and at 5:00 PM. And then we will have a regular council meeting Monday, December 14th, and that will be my final council meeting. It's, it's been a great ride, and we'll talk a little bit more about it on the 14th. But I will see you on the 7th, and then we'll see you on the 14th. Thank you all. Have a good night. Happy Thanksgiving.
Night, everybody. Yes.
Aye. Stay safe.
Bye.
Thank you.